Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this August 12 regular meeting of the West Orange Board of Education. Mr. Calavano.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, in which it is. The majority of justice is our own.
Did you notice the meaning?
Yes, we did.
Okay, gotcha. All right. One program note before we get going. On page 12, item 10, the last donation, we're going to pull that one from tonight's agenda and get back to that at a later date. Let's get started with consideration of the closed and public meeting minutes of July 22nd and 29th, if I can have a motion.
So moved.
I'll second.
All right. Mr. Calavano.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Triggs-Scales?
Yes.
Vice President Watercoy?
I had sent you a note. I was hoping for discussion on the minutes, that I think the minutes don't correctly reflect.
I responded.
Oh, I didn't get the response. Okay.
Okay, so you had a question regarding the closed session of July 22nd.
July 22nd.
And it indicates that the board discussed and agreed to vote on this item, and that's the pre-referendum proposal from EI, and we actually did that in public session.
That was last week. That was the August 8 meeting.
No, no, July 22 meeting. If you look at the July 22 minutes, the regular set of minutes, page 14, you'll see the resolution for EI associates.
But the July 22 meeting is when I requested a second work session to include Bob Ciggy.
Right, but this is just indicating that we approved the EI associates.
Okay. I'm a no vote.
For all?
Wait, wait. What page was that, John?
The public meeting?
No, no, the page you just referred to on the 22nd.
On the 22nd, on the public minutes, page 14, number 12.
We're approving the closed minutes. I'm talking about the closed minutes.
He's referring to this.
I was a no then, too. Okay. I'm a no.
Just on those minutes? Any others, yes?
On the others, July 22nd, closed.
Yeah, that was the one. You're right.
July 22nd, no.
Thanks, Sandra. Thank you, Sandra. You're correct.
And also on the August 8 meeting minutes. I'm a no on both. Actually, you didn't give us the August 8, but July 22.
But I just want to recall, on the 22nd, the full board approved number 12, resolution number 12.
We did.
Nobody voted no on that resolution on the 22nd.
We did. It's approved, yeah.
Okay. To approve, yeah, yes.
The no vote was on, was that the?
For the submission of the plans, right.
Oh, with submission of the plans, we voted yes.
This is the proposal.
Right. No.
We did.
Yes, we discussed and closed that we would come out and vote in public. That's what the minutes say.
The closed minutes is what I'm voting no on. The July 22 closed minutes, 6:43 PM, that said we would come out and vote in public session. We did not. I did not approve that.
Yes, we did.
I asked for a second work session, which is what we had last week, August 8.
Oh, the closed sessions. But the board did agree to do that, and then we did that.
And we voted 5-0.
So the minutes are correctly reflecting what took place.
I'm a no vote.
From July 22.
Okay. President Alper?
Yes.
Superintendent Report. Dr. Kascov.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. A few items in tonight's report. I'm going to conclude, the third item being the annual HIB and student safety, SSDS previously, EVVRS, report of incidences of school violence and vandalism, and start with a couple of items. The first item I'd like to speak to is to just publicly, as superintendent, just acknowledge and send our condolences to the cities of El Paso and Dayton for those tragic shootings that occurred. Obviously, there are in our hearts and thoughts, the victims and those who are recovering. And of course, special thanks and recognition to the amazing first responders. I think in Dayton, we're there on scene in like 30 seconds or something of that. And obviously, to the first responders in our community that, as we say, run towards the danger. Speaking on more of the level of the school district, because I think that any time things like that happen, even though those were not in school settings, you know, we think about this, the kind of what-if. And so I wanted to just speak very briefly about some of the things that I can't take credit for starting, because these were things that were started prior to me getting here, but some proactive steps the district's been taking relative to school safety. We are putting the finishing touches on a revised emergency management plan, which was developed in collaboration with Stonegate Associates, which is a security consultant firm. And we'll be providing training to our administration this summer to all staff as early as possible in the school year as we can with those meetings, and doing some other things, which I'm not going to mention in public as they relate to safety. But those are some things we did. There was also a security audit that was completed, and we currently have a grant out that we will evaluate in terms of how we can be able to fund those things, not only through the grant, the recommendations, but also in partnership with the township, and also, obviously, through our own lines. I still believe that the best way to ensure safe schools is by creating schools that are welcoming, that are open, where students feel supported, they feel supported as individuals and validated individuals. And so obviously, that will continue, and we'll continue to ramp up on those efforts. But I just wanted you to know that school security continues to be a priority for the board, continues to be a priority for myself as your superintendent and for our team. The second piece is concerning the referendum. So also an initiative that was started prior to when I got here, and I'd like to commend the board and I'd like to commend the school administration for hearing the community members, hearing the stakeholders about concerns regarding air quality and saying, listen, we need to do something about this. And that was what the impetus was for beginning to explore the possibility of doing a referendum, was let's look at our HVAC systems, let's update, replace, add, you know, modernize HVAC systems for that end. And so the board embarked on a, with Mr. Calavano, the business administrator, a very aggressive timeline to really get that up and running. We hired a new architect that had to go through RFP, we brought the new architect on, and all of this was based upon the idea that we were going to go out for a November referendum. So coming onboard and now really beginning to tabletop these things, hear feedback from not only the experts but also our community, and also just kind of bringing my own strategic planning lens to it, you know, I think that we, as a superintendent and as a board, said, you know what, it's not in our best interest to move forward as aggressively as we had originally planned. And I'm going to be very transparent as to why, okay? We are in the process of updating our long-range facilities plan. Now, it's not unusual or uncommon for that long-range facilities plan to be updated simply to include the projects the district is planning to do. And that's, in this case, what we were doing, was we had identified projects that were going to remedy the HVAC, that we're going to look at five roofs on different schools, and the Washington School retaining wall. And so the long-range facility plan was going to be updated for all those things. But as I started to think about it, and then the board and I, we consulted on this, Mr. Calavano, we said, you know, when was the last time we did a full-scale facilities evaluation? Now, the one that was already conducted and on which the board will vote to approve, disperse them the funds, was very comprehensive and included all the mechanical systems in all the schools, HVAC, electric, obviously the roofs in those five buildings. So it, or the lion's share of that facilities assessment has been conducted, okay? We also had a facilities assessment that was conducted during the ESIP by Honeywell. But what has been the communication between Honeywell and our architects, and really want to ensure that we're not missing opportunities to maybe correct other things that represent significant issues, right? Now, there may not be anything. When we ultimately do go out to referendum on a kind of more tracted timeline, it may look exactly the same as it does now, but it may not, right? We may uncover things in our facilities that only through actual really in-depth engineering and architectural studies will reveal. We know what happened in Montclair, where the stairs fell down. It was a disaster. We want to head those things off, okay? And the current evaluation did not include all of those systems, okay? We also want to take into consideration not just what I call meat and potatoes, safety and compliance features, but also when we think about kind of curricular upgrades to our facilities, okay? And could we potentially identify one of those curricular needs as a priority? So that when we put up that priority, it really includes that we've taken care of all the compliance and all the code issues in our district, not just about HVAC, but across the board. And so, you know, I think this represents a courageous step by the board, right? Because, you know, it would be, and I've seen it done time and time again by boards, you know, you continue to go all-in on initiative, okay, even though learning has taught us that it might not necessarily be most prudent at this juncture to move forward in that timeline. So I think it's courageous on the part of the board to put a pause to it, as we've learned, and not go all-in on the bad hand, because we recognize that we need to be completely transparent and completely thorough and diligent if ultimately when we move this referendum forward, which we will for the folks concerned about air quality, we will. This is not about stalling and taking a lot of time. It's about doing it in what's the best interest to the taxpayers and to the students and staff in the school. So we are actually planning our next work session for the referendum. I believe it's either on the 19th or 20th. That has not been scheduled yet, but we're trying to iron out that detail. Mr. Calavano are going to be putting together a pretty detailed analysis for the board. We encourage members of the public to attend. It is a public meeting. You'll get to hear some of the initial analysis that's gone onto the presentation and can become active participants in the process, which is, of course, what we want. So that's just what I, you know, and there are a couple of items on the agenda tonight that relate to that, and there will be some kind of teased-out discussion items so that we can have some transparency as to what goes into those numbers, because I sense is that there are members of the public who might be interested in hearing that, and we can move forward collectively and feeling good about this. So that's on the referendum. Okay, so getting to HIB.
Put my glasses on.
Okay, so, you know, we are, of course, a large school district, 7,000 students, 11 schools. And in the 2018-19 school year, we had a total of 110 reported incidences of harassment, intimidation, and bullying. Under the previous regulations, you did not have to report alleged. You just had to report those were confirmed. That's changed as of this year, as far as the state reporting goes. We did, in fact, have 110. Forty-five of those were found to be confirmed. Now, I've often said, one is too many, but I think when you consider the number of students we have interacting in our buildings every day, and the fact that a lot of this is about learning for students, they're not self-actualized adults, they're teenagers, they're pre-teensagers, managing a lot of different things, and a lot of that is what we encounter. There are opportunities for education, you know, of students. So just in total, we had eight incidents annually at Gregory, five at Hazel, one at Mount Pleasant, four at Kelly, sorry, two at Redwood, four at St. Cloud, 12 at, I'm sorry, four at St. Cloud, 12 at Washington, one at Edison, 15 at Liberty, four at Roosevelt, and five at West Orange High School. Now, every year, schools are required to go through a self-evaluation process. Having been the anti-bullying coordinator in my previous district, I can tell you that having the context and the perspective, this is not just simply a compliance exercise for me. I don't take it that way. And so when I look at the data, and they're clearly, you don't have to be a data expert to look at some of the blips there and say, that's interesting, you know, like, why is it particularly high at that school? Why do we have three times the number at a school that's half the size? And I think the explanation of that is complex. It can have everything to do from training to school climate to an aberration in that particular class. But rest assured that there are a couple of blips on this radar of the data that I'll be looking into and really kind of incorporating into administrator goals where they engage in a process of reflection and investigation as to why that may be the case. Switching over to the violence and vandalism, we did have 125 total incidents of violence and vandalism. Now, HIB falls under that category, so the aforementioned 45 incidences do fall under violence and vandalism. Just some key highlights, which I think are important to qualify. We did have three incidents of weapons possession. And the first thing when I saw this report is I wanted to understand those, you know, not having the benefit of looking at the reports. And so when I looked at those, those were possession of knives, Swiss Army knives, and were determined to not be any intent. So they were not accompanied by threats or, you know, kind of concerning social media posts. They were like, I went on a camping trip this weekend, and I left my Swiss Army knife in my backpack, and that was that. So I think it's important to qualify that, because when you see weapons, you're like, wow, that's, you know, I want to know about it. And I did as well, and was kind of relieved to hear the backstory on those, that we were not talking about overt acts of violence or threatening of violence with those weapons. Couple others that jump out, obviously, are, you know, marijuana, right? And, you know, so we had 20 total incidents of use, and we had 13, you know, incidences of confirmed. So again, similar to the HIB, one's too many, right? But I think that, you know, when you consider, and listen, I'm not looking through this through a rosy-colored lens, I'm not being naive, we know what the trends are out there. And so I think that that's a fairly large number, and it's one that we need to continue to dig into. It's something that I really want to learn, as some of our staff who are directly involved in looking into substance abuse, our SACS, our guidance counselors, I really want to understand what we're presently doing. Do we have a strategic approach to how we're addressing substance abuse and substance abuse prevention with our kids, above and beyond what we're covering in, say, in 7th and 11th grade health? What are we doing above and beyond that? What kind of programming? What kind of resources are we dedicating to those initiatives? I think the data, though you could argue relatively low for the number of students we have and compared to some other schools, is still higher than we would want, and probably is low as, you know, is not a representation of how many kids we have actually using. Vaping continues to be an issue. A lot of our drug suspensions are related to vaping, because when we catch kids with vapes, they are sent out, because it's really impossible to tell whether the substance that's in the actual device has THC in it as opposed to just nicotine. So that also accounts for some of the high, you know, drug referrals. Those were kind of the key points I wanted to hit relative to the violence and vandalism. To the board, do you have any questions concerning either the HIB or the SSDS reports?
Sure.
Actually, more comments, because I think there are a couple other tidbits that could be pulled out of it.
Sure.
And first, in noting that Liberty had the highest numbers this year. It didn't have that in prior years, except, well, 2017 it did have.
2017.
It had 20, and then it dropped to five in 2017, 2018. But it's also interesting to note that in the state audit of the HIB administration and practices, the two schools that had perfect scores were Liberty and Edison. So part of that may be identifying and addressing more of the cases, as well as it could be that the other factors that you looked at. While we don't see that high number with Edison, still, when you have only two schools that had perfect scores. Now, it is good to say that our schools overall did very, very, very well. Nobody did badly. Everyone did very, very well. The scores, the composite scores were high. The three areas that I noted, though, where there were consistent issues, whether it's in the Core, Core 1, 2, or 3, were identifying patterns of HIB and reviewing the school plan, that was in Core 1E, and reviewing the school policy rather. Number 2 was making sure that service providers and volunteers were consistently trained. These are the areas that came up that were consistent, that happened in more than one school. And then 3, looking at making sure that the schools were reviewing the effective practices, like, you know, best practices, and reviewing it in relation to school climate. Now, we know that we need to still do a climate survey, and that'll drill down to each school as well as looking at district-wide, and certainly that could, HIB would be a part of that. But these are just things that were kind of interesting to note. The other thing that I was looking at, too, was when you look at the incidents under the student safety data system, was looking at the number of incidents leading to removal. And here, I think, while the high school number of 258, when you have a high school that's the size of a small college, I'm not really alarmed by that, because that, I'm sure, is over a wide range of activities. Here, though, I would look at Liberty as a concern. And my kids, you know, my son went to Liberty, my daughter goes to Liberty now, they've had absolutely happy experiences, they have, their friends have. But I would look, when you see a number of 127 incidents leading to removal, I would question, is it overpolicing? Is this one of the areas that we maybe need to look at to pilot our restorative justice efforts? That's something to consider, so to, because that may help to avert removal.
Yes.
Doesn't mean that there weren't legitimate issues in behavior, attitude, other things, but, you know, is there a better way to address it? And last, the other thing that kind of, that will artificially send, there was actually six on the weapons, that will artificially send it up for not only accidentally having the scouting pocket knives, and I could have been guilty of that myself, but there are some kids who brought in toy pellet guns. And this often happened, either I wanted to carry something to scare somebody because I had to walk through a bad neighborhood, or it was meant to play with as a toy, but under the law, those are still firearms, because they shoot a projectile, even though they are not lethal firearms, right? So those are things that kind of artificially also boost the number a little bit. But I do think that we have an opportunity, and I know we have, somebody's doing the, we're partnering with them in their doctorate study and funding them related to some restorative justice efforts. I think that maybe we can look at how to drill down and work with them to pilot in the places where we see some of the highest numbers, like Liberty.
I think you made some excellent points. Excellent. And, you know, I'd like to just, you know, talk just very briefly about that restorative justice piece, because that is a subject that is just kind of close to just kind of my, I don't know, just my thought process. We did a lot of work in my previous district where, you know, the high school principals and the middle school principals set goals specifically to reduce the number of removals by bringing in some restorative justice pilots and programs. I think that, now, some of those removals might be ISS, they may not necessarily be OSS. In fact, I've heard some principals say, like, I'm not sending the kids out of school, unless, of course, by policy or law, they need to and want them in school, right? And so they, and so I think there are principals that approach it that way, but certainly trying to keep kids in the classroom in the schools as much as possible. Thank you, Mr. Robertson.
You're welcome, sir.
And that concludes my report.
Anyone else have anything on the HIB?
Yes, I just have one thing to add. Mr. Robertson covered quite a bit, but I just wanted to add that every meeting when we have the HIB report, of course, prior to you being here, we've always asked, I've always asked, about whether or not we're getting sufficient PD, and the answer has always been yes. But as we discussed last week during our goal retreat, we always have communication issues. So it's very possible that the schools may not realize that the training they're getting is HIB, because they're scoring low on that. So I guess it's identification of exactly what's happening there, and also they score themselves low on annually assessing the HIB programs, and I know we annually assess it, because we get the reports here at the board meeting. So they're not aware, then, that we have annually assessed HIB.
Yeah, I think one of the, there's a couple of challenges there. I think with training, there are a few things that could be at play there. What you might see reflecting in that is not so much like we're not getting trained, but their perception of the efficacy and the quality of the training, right? Because we do have, you know, compliance requirements as it relates to HIB, but, you know, we have new staff, like, you know, sometimes it's like, you know, because it's a several-year cycle, you know, staff may have gotten it three years ago, but if a new staff member comes in and is coming directly from college, they may not have gotten it, right? So I think that's a piece. You know, as far as the evaluation, unfortunately, it's something that's done very late in the year, and sometimes it's actually even done over the course of the summer, where staff members have to come in, or, so, and it's just kind of a matter of, it's one of those challenges, but I think that we can be more deliberate in the way, maybe we're gathering data from teachers before they leave about their perceptions, and then the principals can kind of compile that in their absence. So two good observations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one other point I totally forgot. Something we've talked about as a board, as we sit in HIB hearings, and we've brought it up, there's been no follow-through, this is an opportunity, is we talked about, we do, you know, we look at how we can support the victim as they're going back in the classroom, but what do we do for the bully? And making sure that incorporated into our interventions is an opportunity to provide counseling and support and define, well, what were the origins of the behavior? Was something going on at home? Is it something in the community? Is it something in the classroom? Is it something in their social life? And how we can support that kid and help to identify root causes for some of the behaviors.
For sure. And that's definitely, I think, is a pretty standard practice. Now, I will say that, you know, I do review all, and the robustness of those, of that support, right? So I think, you know, it's, it's, there's, I think, a good understanding amongst our ABSs as counseling folks. They understand that, the idea of, you know, causation and root factors for behavior. So I think whenever possibly try and do that, it really just kind of becomes down to what kind of services can we offer? But I do know that I review all the letters that come through, and I'm always kind of putting a critical eye on both sides, you know, when I sign off on them, what those things are. As a matter of fact, I turned over one recently where, as it turned out, it was an error where it said that no consequences whatsoever were administered. We went back, we found, in fact, there had been, and support, so. But it's a good point. It's worth mentioning that we should always keep an eye on that support piece for both sides. Thank you, Mr. Robertson.
Thank you.
And I'd just like to add that as we talk about moving toward restorative practices, that's all a part, a part of that reentry.
Yes.
For students. So we're not just looking at the victim, but also at the bully.
Right, absolutely.
Okay.
And that concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. Alper.
We have a couple of presentations, yes?
So we have, okay, okay. So just to give a little preamble to this, because I love preambles, I probably won't be too lengthy, sorry. So as you know, I'm just going to kind of tee this up for our architect from Speciale. So, you know, we have the ongoing air structure project, parentheses, the bubble, okay? And, you know, work in there is ongoing. We have, you know, folks who are in there monitoring regularly. Listen, I'm not going, I'm not going, there have been complications with the air structure. There have been. And, you know, some of those are not preventable, some of those are. I can tell you that I personally, as superintendent coming in and kind of inheriting that project, have made some changes in operating procedure. I think the board's learned some lessons from it. But I think right now, our focus is on working with our partners, architect contract, to get it done as quickly as possible, but not to rush it, right? Because we want one that's complete, that we can feel good about it, we can take pride in it, and that's not going to happen if we rush through it. Working very closely with the athletic director and building principal to try and disrupt training as much as, as little as possible, rather, and speaking with coaches, they're on board, they're cooperating, and they've been great as well as have our students. So I look forward to hearing Mr. Speciale from our architecture firm.
Thank you. Thank you. Tony Catana. As you're aware, the bubble is approximately a month and a half late. Contractor has had, has made several excuses for all of it. Some of them are justifiable, some of them are not. For the most part, he's been behind in everything he's done from the beginning. As of the last job meeting, which was last week, he claimed he was going to be 100% this week by the end of this week. I see that as a cosmetic finish. He will have the floors done, the walls done, everything painted, all the fixtures in, but he's got two major things that he can't overcome. The manufacturer of the bubble, which is Arzon, is not being cooperative. They refuse to make the penetrations that need to be made in the bubble for him to complete his work. They are holding up the previous contractor who installed the bubble from completing his end of the contract, because they want a changeware from him for work that was scheduled for them to do.
Mr. Catana, can you just elaborate on what you mean by penetrations into the bubble?
So your bubble is manufactured by a company called So, your bubble is manufactured by a company called Arizona. Arizona has the warranty of the bubble itself. In order for any work to happen to the bubble, Arizona has to do it. No subcontractor, nobody else, you can't touch it, you void the warranty the second you touch it. So only Arizona can come in, make the new openings that they need, make them sealed tight, that's part of their warranty for the bubble itself, so only Arizona can do that. And Arizona refuses to work for this contractor until they get paid for a change order with the previous contractor, that I personally wouldn't sign off on, because it's shown on the drawings for them to do it, but they're asking for additional money. So now they're at a point where they're holding it over the board's head to say, "Hey, pay me this change order for work that they were rescheduled to do, or I won't do the work for this contractor." So in essence, the contractor, which is GL Group, that's working on the locker rooms, should be completed with most of his work by Friday, but the work associated with making penetrations through the bubble will not be done. That includes the roof vent for the drain waste and vent for the bathrooms, and exhaust vents from the bathrooms. So that work, unless Arizona steps up to the plate in the next week, won't be done. I've been trying to push Arizona to come out, I've made a suggestion to the contractor that they pay him in advance, to, to give them an incentive to come out. I'm hoping that the contractor will, will do that. Beyond that, I don't know how to make Arizona comply. They don't technically work for the board, they are a manufacturer, they have the upper hand from having the warranty. I've thought about having your legal counsel send them a letter, which is appropriate, but I'm worried that that might push them away further, and I'm trying to be cooperative with them to get them to participate.
Where are they based? They have local, local representatives?
They have local representatives, we have several of them, but I'm not positive where they're based out of.
We, we have contact information for them, John?
And I already alerted their attorney, so they have all the paperwork, and they're looking at it right now.
Another question. The, we've had some, some leakage issues during heavy rains, and I understand it has something to do with faulty gasket system that underlays the foundational pieces. Can you explain the mechanics behind that, and whose responsibility that is?
Again, that's Arizona, that's responsible for that. Technically, it's the previous contractor, which is Cattell, but Arizona is the installer, and Cattell can't do anything about it, it's got to be Arizona that does the sealing. Basically, what they do is they put a gasket between the bottom of the dome and the concrete, and in several locations, it's still leaking. They claim they came out last month and fixed those leaks, but at the last storm, which was a terrible storm, it leaked again. They're blaming the grading around the bubble as the cause, if you, if you, if you realize that back of the track and field, the hill rolls down into the bubble, and that is where it's leaking, and in a heavy storm, that water does run down and run up against the structure itself.
Now, is that gasket, sorry, it was kind of, that gasket is, is original, or that was reinstalled when the new work?
It was a new gasket. So yes, everything from the concrete up is all brand new. So we're fighting with them on that, they claim they fixed it, but we have evidence that, that it wasn't fixed. They're saying that it's our problem, because we should have regraded around the outside of the bubble, but the reality is, the old bubble was there for how many years with the grading the way it was, and you've never had that issue before, that I'm aware of. So it's their installation that seems to be the, the problem more than anything.
Mr. Catana, did you have anything else? I think we have some questions from the board.
Sure.
So, I'm sure some folks out there agree with me that this update's kind of, and not any offense to Mr., to Mr. Catana, but it's unacceptable. This project was supposed to be done months ago, and to hear of these issues, I mean, it's, it's a little frustrating. I took a tour with Mr. Bly last week, and in no way, shape, or form does it look like it's anywhere ready to be cleared for full use this week. I'm a little concerned to hear that the grading is an issue, because the turf field that surrounds the bubble doesn't have any leaking or flooding or anything, the parking lot doesn't get flooded, so I'm a little concerned to hear that the grading is what's influencing the bubble leaking, because I don't think that's true.
I'm not saying it is, I'm saying that's what the contractor's claiming.
Right, no, no, that's what I'm saying, it's, I'm not blaming you, you're just the messenger. But from what I understand, that, and what I actually saw, tiling's not done, electricity's not in there. We have schools starting in a few weeks, we have gym classes that are going to be displaced still, we have, from what I understand, the football team is not going to be able to use the locker room, that they've actually been moved back into the building for right now. So I guess, you know, my question is, do we have any grounds for legal action? Because this seems, I mean, to me, it's unacceptable for a vendor to tell us they're not going to do the work that we've already paid them to do.
You can, you do have things you can do, and I'm sure he's spoken to the lawyer, but most of the time, what'll happen is, you'll give a contractor a seven-day notice, to put them on notice that they have to be complete. At the end of the seven-day notice, if they're not working, which they are working, then you can put in a claim to fire them. Firing them isn't going to get your, your work done faster, it's going to add months to the process. So the best thing we can do at this point is keep pushing them, and keep pushing them. Can you apply liquidated damages to them? Yes, if you can show damages, we can apply liquidated damages, and the lawyers know how to do that. Basically, what that is, you backcharge them for things, that they haven't gotten done that affect you. So if you can't utilize the space by school, you can probably apply liquidated damages from that point, because you have to provide additional services elsewhere that'll cost you extra money, it may add extra cost for you to have people opening and closing spaces, so you can apply some things at that point, but it is usually difficult to do that, but we can always try.
One thing which I haven't heard tried, and, and you'll learn, I'm, I'm a, I'm a rosy-colored optimist, is, you know, have we tried to arrange a meeting with Arizona? Face-to-face, sit down, just, you know what, maybe, maybe there's something we're not getting, maybe, maybe it's the message they haven't heard, and maybe I'm naive, maybe that won't work, but it's not something we've presently done, and it's something I might recommend we do in the short terms, to bring them in and just, and just have a conversation, where we are, what our concerns are, what do we need to do to get to where we need to be, from their perception. And if we find that we have irreconcilable differences, you know, then we can always go the legal route, but let's try, good old-fashioned, sit down and have a conversation with them first. And again, maybe I'm being naive, but I think it's worth a try.
That would be my recommendation.
I, I agree with that recommendation, but, but here's the thing, this meeting is the first time we're hearing that there's a problem with Arizona. Again, going back to our goal retreat last week about communication, the board has not been told any of this, and it seems like you've, you've known this for a while.
No.
When did you find out that Arizona was incorporating?
Last week.
Last week. Well, we had a meeting last week, we weren't told.
Oh.
Okay. About Arizona. Okay, the other thing is, I agree with you, we've never had a, had leakage in the bubble before, and, and I'm surprised as, as anyone else, that there's any water leakage, but I took a tour a few weeks ago, I haven't taken another tour recently, but I'm told that it's also being painted three different shades of blue.
Two.
There's a, there's a low, it basically almost kind of simulate, kind of like a chair rail, where you have a, what's it, dark on the bottom and light blue on the top?
And I'm told that neither, neither of those blues is the Mountaineer blue, so that's the other thing I'm told, that it's not the right shade of blue. You can speak to that?
Well, I, I mean, I was only in there, and I, you know, I couldn't see whether it was an exact match-up. Ms. Merklinger, you were in there?
I would say, I'm not, I don't think the blue is as dark as we typically have in our Mountaineer blue color, I mean, it's, it's definitely more of a navy blue and Columbia blue. It's close, it's a very light blue, I will say that, on the top. I mean, not, it does look nice, but it's not West Orange High School colors. You know, the other thing is, I was in there at 4:30, and there was no one working on the building, at all whatsoever, and it was a weekday, so I'm also curious, one of the questions I also had was, what are the hours we're expecting them to be working on the bubble? Because it was 4:30, the football team had done their workout, they were out already, and no one was working on anything in there. So the other question I have is the safety of our students who are trying to work out versus the times that the construction groups are in there doing their work, because from what I understand, there's not proper ventilation either.
So we, you know, based, as of this morning, we made the decision that we're, we're closing off the bubble for the remainder of the week, so that, you know, there's epoxy being laid down, there's fumes in there, there's, there's cleanup that needs to be done as a result of the sanding down of the floors, and we pretty much identified that it's, it's no longer really a, an appropriate space for kids to be training, but we're very optimistic that the work won't necessarily be done by Friday, but that the space will be safe and clean for students to use, at least for weight training on Friday.
Okay. Only because I think the football team has some scrimmages and things coming up, so I wouldn't want them to be displaced from being able to work out.
Yeah, so I-
Or some of, and some of the other athletes.
I spoke with, I spoke with Coach Grant, as a matter of fact, he was one of the first people I reached out to, just to say, "Are we good?" And, you know, and he worked, Mr. Bly was very accommodating, and, and felt comfortable that they could do their training this week without the weight training, but that we're looking to get them in there Monday, at latest, to be able to start using the weightlifting equipment again.
And we have a meeting with the contractor on Wednesday this week, so we will know better on Wednesday how close he is to being complete by the end of the week. He had a lot of stuff done in the past week, based on what I've seen, but I'm not sure that he's going to be 100% complete.
I've likewise seen a lot of progress in the last week, you know, the bathrooms are tiled, the floors are epoxied, I mean, there's been a lot of progress. They definitely have, I feel, I think, I, my impression is that they've felt the increased encouragement that we've been giving them for the last week, and have been moving much more quickly than they had been, so.
One other thing, I, I'm told that the bubble is left open in the afternoon and at night, can you just make sure that it's locked? I mean-
I have informed the contractor that he needs to make sure it's locked.
Okay, thank you.
And the paint colors, I, I can't say I selected them, I didn't select them, so I believe they were picked from colors that are standard in the school district. If the contractor didn't get the right colors, we'll check that. It may be that he got the wrong color.
Thank you, I appreciate you coming and giving an update, thank you.
No problem.
And thank you very much. I saw the bubble too, a couple of weeks ago, so I'm glad to hear that there's great progress. I guess the board will have to get back in there after Friday and take another look. But generally, when you have a job that is not near completion, when it's time for school to open, the contractors will double up on their hours-
Yep.
-and work on weekends, and do whatever is necessary to meet that deadline. So is that what we're anticipating from the contractor? Or you'll know that when you meet with them?
I know they've worked over the weekend, I know that they're working, once somebody asked about the hours, normal hours for contractors are 7:00 to 3:30, in that range, so coming at 4:30, more likely they're not there. I know that he's working with some subcontractors that are coming and doing specific jobs, so getting them to work extra time, they're, they're just coming in to do a job, like the tile guys came in over the weekend and tiled, and so they, they completed all that work over the weekend. I know that they painted the floor in the last few days. Painting the floor kind of, when, we had a conversation last week about what he planned to do for the week, I kind of questioned some of it, because he was going to paint the floor. Well, the second he starts to paint the floor, he can't do anything else. So I kept saying, "How are you going to get all this done, when you got to paint the floor?" And he said, "Oh, it's only going to take me three days." Took him three days to sand the floor, took him four days to sand the floor. So his estimation of time and how long it's going to take to do something is not in line with reality sometimes.
Let's keep going with complete transparency on this one. You know, as Mr. Catana mentioned, the sanding. So when the contractor used the Sanders, he did not utilize the, the dust catchbacks. And so the, the locker room, so I, that's how I started my day today, was hearing that the locker room was covered in, and not just dust, it was covered in kind of like a weird kind of, you know, just from, from sanding the floor. So we're holding the contractor accountable for, for bringing a commercial cleaning crew to do that. I understand, Mr. Caliban, that's happening tomorrow. We did not pull, originally, we were going to use our own folks, and it said, "Nope, put them back in the high school, get the schools ready to open," so they're bringing in a, a commercial cleaner to clean the space, including the equipment. I know that's out there, so I, I figured it was important to mention that.
Mr. Robertson, did you have anything?
I'm livid, and this is, it's almost a year, actually, overdue, and it's 100% over budget. A while back, we identified, prior to your coming onboard, Mr. Catana, that one of the primary issues is a fundamental management one, that no project manager had been assigned to own it. It wasn't clear in the original architect's contract, it wasn't assigned to buildings and grounds to own, there was no ownership. So, number one, we can certainly remedy that moving ahead, but that's how it got, how we got here. The color, the color of the bubble itself, we found out last year, you know, you can paint in Mountaineer blue, but the color of the bubble itself came with the material from Arizona, the Bubble Company, and it's not Mountaineer blue, and that should have been verified beforehand. So another key learning from this is, while we did RFP for the architect, we didn't, there was bidding done for the contractor, where the bidding should have been done, where the initial scrutiny should have been done, was with the Bubble Company itself, if all changes have to conform to the warranty, and if the Bubble Company has to own many of those changes. We did not have any scrutiny there. We chose, we looked at different designs that they had done before, we looked at engineering specs, and what the wind resistance would be, and how it could handle snow, because we'd gotten used to our bubble collapsing on a regular basis. By this point, we could have built a building for over a million dollars, we could have built a building, but we did not have scrutiny-
Building that size would be a lot more than a million dollars.
Well, maybe, maybe that would have been worth it, but we, we did not have scrutiny in the selection of the Bubble Company. So moving ahead, Dr. Kascón, I think certainly your suggestion of bringing the Bubble Company in for a sit-down would be good. I think bringing the, the, the construction company in for a sit-down would be good, to really level, make sure that expectations are managed about, "Look, maybe you need to put in some extra hours, 7:00 to 3:30 may not cut it right now, as school's about to open. What can be done? Can some added value be done? There've been screw-ups on the, on the, on their part as well." You know, something as simple as not doing the sanding properly, and, and knowing that you're going to be left with, you know, basically particles, that, you know, without doing proper cleanup.
I, I would agree with Mr. Robertson, relative to the ownership of the site. I, you know, I do think it's, it's worth kind of qualifying something, because I, you know, I refer to it with the board as kind of a potential pain point for the public as it relates to this premise that, well, we could build, we could have built a building for the same cost. You know, we, we, I think there's a couple ways to look at that. One is, is looking at the numbers themselves, and we did actually, there was some analysis that was done before I got here, in terms of what the cheapest structure would have been, and I think it was called like a pole barn, or something of that nature, and it was like 2 million. And I think the other thing is, is that, I think we have to be, we have to be cautious, let's, let's Monday morning quarterback on things that are worth Monday morning quarterbacking, and the oversight of the site is absolutely one, because that's something we can improve moving forward.
Yeah, no project management.
You know what I'm saying? But, but let's, you know, but I think at the time that we were making these decisions, there was a time sensitivity to it, so the idea of going out to referendum for a building, it just, it just wasn't, it wasn't really an option at that time, because we were thinking about, "We need to get this remedied." Now, as it turns out, it's very frustrating looking at it in retrospect, because of all the time it's taken, but I think we have to evaluate the decision that it was made at that time, that I, that I do believe it was the best decision at that time, notwithstanding the challenges that have been encountered successively. And I think it's just important to say that for the public, lest the public think like, "Well, why didn't we build a building?" Well, because A, it was way more expensive, and B, it wasn't really truly an option at that time. And I submit those comments with all due respect to the board, but I think it's an important qualification to make for public perception about this, because let's face it, there are enough mess-ups with it already, we don't have to layer that on top of it as well.
Okay, well, Dr. Kascón, we can have that discussion another time, because I'm not even sure that we went through the proper process of reviewing those structures, but that's done. Here's where we are now, though. If, if all this rides on, on Arizona, this, by the way, is the first time we're hearing this, it's the first time we're hearing that they were the holdup, and that these holdups existed because of the Bubble Company, this round of holdups.
I can't say that Arizona's holding up the contractor from doing the work he's doing. They're holding him up from completing the work that needs to be completed. So, like, the floors and the tile, and the, and the painting of the walls, and all that kind of stuff, it's not anything that Arizona's holding them up from doing, that's just their inability to get the work- That's just their inability to get the work done.
Right. The ceiling, the gaskets, and the ceiling for the leakage and all that stuff-
Correct, that's Arizona.
-which is critical to its function, that's Arizona. And this is the first time we're hearing about what is controlled under Arizona and the warranty and what is not.
Well, so, you know, we've been talking to Arizona for the last six months over this, and we coordinated the work with them prior to even going out the bid. We've gone through the process with them directly. That's not their holdup. Their holdup is they're, they want more money-
Want to get paid, right.
-from somebody that they shouldn't get paid, and they're saying they're not going to do any work until they get paid. So they're doing it as a-
(inaudible).
As to the color of the bubble, the bubbles come in five colors. That's it. You can't get the color you want in any of them. That's the color, that's the closest color you've got. And selecting the manufacturer, you have no ability to select them, whether it was Arizona or the other manufacturer that was available. That's up to the contractor by law. We don't even have a choice in it. We can spec one, but it's up to the contractor to select who he wants to use.
Well-
So we don't have those choices, as to say. So the public needs to be aware that it's not like the board didn't do its due diligence there.
True.
Even if you did your due diligence beyond your ability, and you did check the, all the important things, the snow loads and all that stuff, you made sure of all that stuff, to make sure that it doesn't collapse again. You went through all of that, and that was all in the spec, it's all clearly done, the manufacturer complies with all of that. He's just at this point not being cooperative to the contractor. And it could be the contractor's has a bad repu-, I mean, it could be the contractor not dealing with him properly, it could be anything, you know, two people not having a good conversation. I think it's best if we bring him in and try to get him to be cooperative.
I think we have two sit-downs, we need to do. Yep.
Okay. What I'd like to do, we have agenda comment coming up, but what I'd like to do is go out of order and take questions, comments from the public just on the air structure, if you can stand by for a few minutes, Mr. Katana-
Sure.
...so that anybody who has any comments on just the air structure or has questions, get them taken care of before we switch topics to our other presentation. So if anybody does have anything on the air structure, they can come up now on that. Live three minutes, let us know your name and address. Give you three minutes in the clock.
Yeah.
Ron Charles, Colonial Woods Drive. It's a little bit strange on this side of the microphone. Before I start on my comments, in full disclosure and fairness to the architect, he needs, I don't know if he remembers, I was the board president when the structure went down. Since it's been down since February, probably no one knows it more about it, the workings or selection than I do. So I have a few questions. You mentioned the Geo Group, is that what, is that-
G- GL.
GL, okay, okay, okay. So, okay, I got it. Okay. Also, in the plans that, I guess, were, we were drawing up, there was for the conference room to have access by way of the two coaches' room. And that's not what made it to the final, I guess, structure? So I was wondering how, or what happened with that? Because the plan was to have a conference room big enough so that if we wanted to, multimedia rooms where we would have film, we would have press conferences when the kids had the signings, that was the vision in that room. That room is, right now, no bigger than, it could fit maybe two or three people in there, and that's all. So I was wondering how that got taken out of the plans. To Mark's point about project management, I mean, to me, there isn't any here, and this is why we're in the predicament that we are. We went through, the bubble went down in February, you know, and we went through all of last year, of the fall season, and then went through the winter season, went through the spring, and here we are through the summer, and now we're here in October. We're here, by the time it gets all done with the lockers and all, so, you know, that's, and we're starting school in about three weeks. About the colors, I was there Thursday, I was there Sunday, I was there tonight. The colors are, the blue that's on the, I guess, the bubble itself is a Seton Hall blue, if you will. The blue that's painted, I don't know who selected, those are two different blues, which Mordecai said, it's not a Mountaineer blue. I mean, but that's something that's an easy fix, if we select it. I know Dr. Rawls and I were talking about doing some design as far as making it the home of the Mountaineers and discussing some of that stuff, and putting our logo on it and making it like the home of the Mountaineers. So that's something I know that we can talk, but I think the project manager of this is what was suffered here. I don't know, I know that it's raining, I know some of the rain has come in, and we were there the other day, we seen the remnants of the rain. It's the same foundation, concrete, the same runage, so I don't know, I think the problem is where the bubble connects into, or links into the, I guess, the concrete or the metal steel. I think that's where it seems to be, whatever has been telling me about. So those are some of the things that I have. I mean, I was there when they were epoxying it over the weekend, I spoke to the superintendent. You know, there was two older gentlemen working there by themselves, and there was what the superintendent said, it was an underestimation of the dust. The dust, I was at 9/11 working, it's the same exact dust that was in 9/11, from the concrete and all, and it's about two or three, three inches, four inches deep on all the material. So that's more than a one-day or two-day project to clean up in itself. So that's something that the board needs to take a look at, so-
Thank you.
Those are just some of my things. Thanks.
Thanks. And we can continue to take comments, and then you can just cover everything at the end, Mr. Rawls.
Hello, James Rawls, 46 Warren Road. Also president of the Mountaineer In-Zone Club. So I appreciate the update on the bubble. Certainly some things we were not aware of as well, but I'm also an optimist and do agree that there's been a lot of progress over the last two weeks. And what, at least I've seen as well, it looks like many of the cosmetic things that need to be addressed will be addressed. Based on what I heard today and some of our past experiences, perhaps a contingency plan should be put in place in case they do not fix the bubble. We can't get the contractor to come in and cut out whatever items they need to cut out, plumbing's not completely fixed, so contingency plan might be necessary. That would include porta-potties or whatever is necessary to allow us to continue to use it, because our student athletes do utilize it, and I can tell you that it's made a significant difference in their performance of the football players because of the ability to utilize the weight. So I'll stop there in terms of any comments, but I do appreciate that the board members, superintendent have all taken the opportunity to visit and see for yourselves what's going on, and it does sound like escalation to the highest levels at the company, Azure, I guess is the name of the company is, would be necessary and could be, lead to some resolution. So thanks for the update.
Thank you.
Good evening, Robin Isurles, 22 Yale Terrace, from West Orange Cares About Schools. I do, as a parent in the district, share your outrage. Right now, I'm seething in the back, and I don't know what to do with that anger. But I am curious, why wasn't there a project manager appointed, asked, invited to sit? If anybody could give us some clarification on that. And also, just, I think, again, as a parent advocate, I think when you sit down with the folks that you're going to sit down with, perhaps come up with a real list of demands, you know, and use the leverage that you have as board members that you are, to make sure that they come good on their promises, because this is outrageous, and unfortunately, I think, issues like this is where our parents get angry, but then also sort of give up hope that things work the way that they should. And so, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one further on this, you can respond.
Let's start with contractors. Contractors tend to have the upper hand with boards. With most projects, it's public bid, the laws are written in their favor. Your hand is more legal. You have to have justification for what you do to a contractor. So it's always best, in your best interest, to work with them and try to motivate them. Money is usually the thing that motivates them, and we are holding money on them. They won't get paid until they're done at this point. The color, again, with the bubble, is available colors. I'm not sure about the paint colors. We'll double-check those with the school colors that were selected. If the contractor painted the wrong colors, we'll have them repaint it. Process-wise, I've heard, it's been a long time, but realize it's two projects, not one project. If it were one project from the beginning, it may have gone faster. The fact that it was two projects added time to the process. What else did they?
I just want to say, you know, to, and I'm sorry, I caught the first name, Robin, from West Orange Cares About Schools. Isurles, Mr. Isurles. You know, yes. And, you know, my goal, and I think I, it's an appropriate time for me to speak as your new superintendent, only on the job for four weeks, that I could tell you my goal as the chief school administrator is that, you know, we do our best to never have a parent come to the mic and make those kind of statements, right? Where, now, you can't please everybody all the time, but certainly, you know, this is a situation where we could have done better, and we need to do better, we need to learn from it moving forward. So I just want you to hear that from me, I've been here a relatively small amount of time to maybe correct things, but certainly that's, I know the goal of this board, having worked with them for a relatively short amount of time, but I know that they are committed to that, and I want you to know that I am as well, and all the members of my immediate administration, we're going to do better. And I vow that to you tonight. Thank you.
Oh, the conference room. I believe that during the beginning of the project, right when the metal studs went up, the facility, the athletic director asked to make changes in that. So we moved the exit from the ladies locker room, we basically turned it 90 degrees, which cut through where the conference room was, it made the offices a little bit smaller, and it made the conference room a little bit smaller to do that.
I'm sorry, Mr. Katana, you said the athletic director asked you to make changes?
Through administration, yes.
So is this because the girls would be exiting into the locker room itself?
They would be exiting into the-
I mean, not locker room, into the weight room.
Yeah, right. And they didn't want that.
Okay.
But here's the-
Because the bubble approved plans, so if there's a change to the plans, it comes back to the board to reapprove.
Right, we have to approve it by the board.
If there's any revision to the plans-
Don't look at me, I wasn't here.
If there's any revision-
Lucky you.
I'm going to lateral that ball.
Yeah, I'll look at that.
Yeah. Yeah, if there's any revision to the plans by the athletic director, by anybody else, it comes back to the board for approval.
Yeah. We went through months of reviewing different plans, months. And then, once we approved the plans-
Not my choice. Let me find out what happened. Was it not my choice?
Well, it's a process breakdown. Once again, from a project management ownership standpoint, there was a complete breakdown in process. To answer Mrs. Isurles' question, in the very beginning, we were under the impression that either Buildings and Grounds was going to own it, or the architect, as part of their contract, was going to own it. That architect is since gone. So, but moving ahead, we know that there needs to be a clear project manager.
I think that covers that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Continuing with our slate of exciting presentations-
Yeah.
-we present to you representatives, including Mr. Frank Macio from Macio's Food Service, to present to you on that. Gentlemen?
Wow, here's a good setup. I promised not to mention anything about bubbles. Not making light of it, but boy, that was interesting. My name is Jeff Bakelmann. I'm the regional support specialist for Macio's. I do business development, operation support, and basically anything that this guy to my left asks me to do. The guy to my left is the one and only Frank Macio. To his left is Keith Leader, who is one of our regional managers in our operation team support. First of all, I'd like to thank you and express my appreciation for the opportunity to be here tonight and for the opportunity to serve the students and community of West Orange Schools. A little bit about who we are. I'd like to say we're probably the largest company in New Jersey that no one's ever heard of. But I say that with all due respect and confidence, and we are just that, a small business. It's a family-owned company. The guy whose name is on the door is to my left. And with that, I'd just like to introduce Frank to just say a few words about Macio's.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us here, administration, board, community. I'd like to thank you guys again for the opportunity to serve your children. I've been in this business in school food service for over 27 years. I grew up in the restaurant business, so I've been in food my whole life, and I'm still trying to lose some weight, but anyway, again, I know it's getting late, so I'm going to let Jeff go on with your presentation, and thanks. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Frank. Well, after you just meet Frank for five minutes, you understand why I decided to join the company. Macio's, again, 27 years in school food service, and that's all that we do. Outside of that, we do have a catering, barbecue catering service, which we operate as well. And recently, even a trucking business to transport commodities, frozen commodities, from the warehouses to the school districts. And a real brief story on why Macio's got into the trucking business. Well, Frank, being the perfectionist that he is, we noticed that in the past, many of the trucking companies the state used, the vehicles weren't necessarily the most sanitary, they weren't in the best shape, they were kind of rundown, I don't want to use roadway trucks as a reference, but you get the idea. You've seen some of those broken-down trucks on the road. They weren't, many weren't even refrigerated. That became a major concern to Frank and the Macio's team, in that we want to make sure that we ensure the food transport from the point of origin to the point of service, that that food undergoes the highest quality control in clean trucks, refrigerated trucks. So that was such a concern for Frank and the team, that we decided to buy our own truck to service some of our own schools. And then that turned into a very popular idea when people started seeing our brand-new refrigerated truck pull up to schools. We started getting more calls from other districts asking if, even districts we don't serve, asking if we could transport their commodities. And from there, I guess, it just snowballed into a larger company. So now we've got six vehicles in total in our fleet, servicing a large part of the state, self-operated schools, competitor schools, our schools. And it just all started from the point where we just wanted to make sure our food arrived in a clean, sanitary vehicle. And that's kind of the reference I wanted you to have about who we are and what we do. Our references are impeccable. We've got over 190 school districts that we serve in New Jersey. Many are small, many are smaller school districts. There are some charter schools and some private schools that we serve, but we also have a large abundance of larger K-12 schools, similar to West Orange, and that list keeps growing. Our rate of retention is magnificent. I have worked in this industry for 30 years, and I worked for a competitor of Macio's for 30, almost 30 of those years. When I decided to depart that organization, I took a different position in another industry. When I returned back to food, which is what I miss the most, I came to Macio's for that reason, and when I looked at their rate of retention, I was beside myself for probably the better part of 15, 20 years nearly, 100% retention. Clients that start with Macio's tend to stay with Macio's. Our state procurement is a big issue now for certainly the business department, there's a lot of new- There's a lot of new regulations and procedures, and we're very familiar with that, very involved with the state. We've actually been consultants with the state on several workshops in the development of those procurement regulations. Quality products. A concern that I've heard, or a question that I've heard, is in regards to the quality of our products. Do we use high-quality products? Well, please, the trucking story, I think, is an example of our commitment to quality. Being a smaller company, we are not, we don't have the ability to take advantage of national contracts throughout different organizations and high-volume programs. However, I see that as an advantage for us, because we have to source products on an individual basis. Not by every school. We do have standards for all of the schools that we serve in the state, but because we're working with a lower volume than some of our national competitors, we're able to get different bargains, I guess you will. We fight a little bit harder to get those prices, and we even go so far as to pay our vendors in advance to get the benefit of lower pricing. And that's a bold statement for a family-owned business, those of you who have some finance background. We work on a revolver, so we've got to take out more money just to get lower prices to pass on to our customers. And we don't do that at the expense of the quality of our product. Our procurement department, you know, we do vendor inspections, random vendor inspections, where we'll go out to warehouses and facilities on an unannounced basis to make sure that their facilities are being maintained the way they're supposed to, and they're passing all of the NSF and health quality regulations and industry standards. We have a, we're beginning to develop an even more robust, sustainable, recyclable program. We've always had some products. We were the first to sign up with a vendor called Bottle Box, who recycles used water bottles for our plastic containers. We're taking that a step further now, and we're trying to find more, more paper products that we can use. Corrugated cardboard, believe it or not, it's hard to believe how much those paper straws are. You would think that they'd be cheaper, but they're certainly not. But we're working with some vendors to try and find alternative products out of cornstarch or even compressed paper to offset the, the use of, of the unrecyclable items or polystyrene. Locally grown produce. We always take advantage of locally grown produce, as long as it's in season. All of our produce during seasonal times of the year are New Jersey, are from New Jersey farms. We have a program, I'll talk a little bit about later, which is called Farm to Tray, where we've actually contracted with eight farms so far in the state for acreage. Not vast acres, we'll, we'll contract for an acre or two, and that acre will be used for our, our harvest. So the product grown there, we use for field trips. We'll bring, offer it to students and to faculty members, if you'd like, to have the kids go on a field trip, they spend a little time with the farmer. If not, we still harvest it from that farm, bring it to the school, and serve it to the students. It's always done in an educational format. It isn't just a surprise. We want to make sure, because there's not enough to feed the entire district for a month out of these. So they're done for more promotional and educational purposes. But we're the only company to do that. And that just keeps growing, because we're finding farmers are talking to other farmers about it, and they're contacting us, asking us if we'd like to do that. We also do that with vegetables, peaches, apples, and other items as well. Thanks, Frank. Say that again. Yeah, I was just describing, that's our Farm to Tray program. I'm going to let Keith talk a little bit about some of the other promotions that we do. Keith is not only a regional manager, Keith is a certified and professionally trained chef. So Keith, why don't you talk to us a little bit about some of these promotions that we have?
Absolutely. So over the last 10 to 15 years, we've developed the Chef to School program, or also known as Chef Days, where our director or area supervisor will get in touch with your BA. They will basically schedule certain days for one of our chefs to come out to the school to cook for the kids. We have approximately 36 food programs that we've developed over the last 10 to 15 years, whether it be a pasta bar, a macaroni and cheese bar, some sort of creative salad that we're using to actually help use the Farm to School program, products that do come in. It gives us the opportunity to not only enhance the culinary, what's the word I'm looking for, experience of the children, but not only that, more importantly, it brings fun, which is really what we want to do. We want to make it fun for the kids. We'll reach out to the BA, we'll actually market everything, we'll give them a date, we'll hang signage, you know, throughout the school. And that also brings us to the display cooking, which is also very similar. So some of these programs will actually cook the product right in front of them. So we may set up burners, and on that macaroni and cheese day, we'll have the chef cook the product directly, instead of just traying a portion of the product, which is, you know, like I said, one of those 36 things that we do. What else can I say? I think that's it.
I'd like to talk about that, this, this last one, the Faculty and Student Frequent Diner Rewards Program. It's something I came up with myself. You all know, everybody's familiar with rewards programs in just about everything you do. Every store you go to, every credit card you have, every airline you fly, every hotel you stay at, everybody's offering you some incentive for their service, for utilizing their service. Well, I thought, why aren't we doing something like that? And, and the, the idea generated when I was in a school district, and it was, it was a high-need school district. So I was watching some students there as they were participating, and lunch participation was great, but then there was the snack stand that was in the cafeteria that didn't quite have this highest level of participation. Again, I prefaced that by saying this was a high-need school. But there were some students that were on there, and a lot of students weren't. And I realized that, you know, in some districts where you have a student that's in need, that student may never have a chance to participate in a snack program like the other kids. And, you know, we always try and make kids feel inclusive, and, and we don't want to set any stigmas up. So the rewards program is designed where after, say, and we can customize that to any district based on participation, but for an example, if after 10 meals, you earn a point, and that point could be redeemed for a free snack. And it isn't much. It could be a 50-cent bag of baked lays, or, or some, some pretzels, or a bottle of water. But it's just the experience that student has, where he can now go up to that snack stand like everybody else and, and pick up a snack, or a bottle of water or something. And that's all it was. It was just a simple idea like that. But as we've begun talking to districts about it, many districts have been ecstatic about it. Because it also offers incentives to everybody else, too, whether you have the ability to buy something on the snack stand or not. It just makes everybody feel that their business has been appreciated. I'm going to go up to the retail side of my experience. This is a fun one. Hickory Sticks. I mentioned our catering service before. Well, above all things, yeah, Frank decided he was going to buy a barbecue restaurant in Fort Lauderdale a few years back, before I got there. I don't know. But we learned a lot from barbecue, and as that learning experience continued to grow and the success, we kept getting awards for the barbecue, we thought it would be a great opportunity to bring some of that barbecue to New Jersey. New Jersey's not known for its barbecues, but I promise you, after you taste the Hickory Sticks barbecue, you, you may reevaluate that. And you will be on August 21st. But we also got a food truck. And food trucks are very popular. They're very, they're very trendy right now in schools. They're on TV, and there's food truck shows everywhere you look. So we've got a food truck, and that food truck will be bringing out to the secondary schools generally on a promotional basis. It's just another way to create some excitement and break the monotony of, of the typical dining experience. So it's just one more additional thing that we have to offer, and we'll be utilizing in West Orange. Little bit about the personnel and the staffing. All the employees, the West Orange Food Service employees have been, will be and have been retained. Most, I'd say 85 to, 85 to 90% of the employees, we've already spoken and had contact with. They filled out all their paperwork. Everybody was retained at their previous rate of pay with an increase. Same level of holidays, same amount of sick days and emergency closed days they had previously. We provide uniforms to the employees, safety shoes, we have 401K plans, we offer free life insurance to all the employees, health insurance for those employees who are eligible and qualified for it. All employees are eligible for unemployment benefits during any extended periods of absence when school is closed for three days or more. And then a variety of other Machio's family perks. And here's one thing, again, not to be taken lightly, but every year Frank and his partner Ken, out of their own pockets, pay everyone, bring everyone, buy every one of our employees a turkey for the holidays. You know, one of those long things that most companies have kind of gone by the wayside on, and we keep doing it. We have a holiday party for the, for, I guess, a lot of turkeys. A holiday party every year for all the employees. And all the employees, last year we had nearly 1,200 employees attend, and every year it continues to grow. Beyond that, Frank also pays out Christmas bonuses. I know, Christmas bonuses. Now, I'm not going to tell you, it's going to put them in another tax bracket, but it's just one of the more personal things that I've found employees appreciate, and a lot of the larger companies have since moved past and forgotten. Beyond that, employee engagement programs. We have a lot of employee-focused groups. We work with employees. Small companies love to promote from within. We do performance evaluations every year on all the employees, so they know how they're doing. We don't want an employee to be surprised when they find out they're not doing something wrong, and they get disciplined in some way or another. But if they're aware of what their deficiencies are, they at least have an opportunity to improve and do better. With that, at the end of the year, with that performance, performance evaluation, comes an employee personal development plan. We want to ask our employees if what they, if they aspire for any more, anything more, that they want to become a supervisor. Because we have so many districts in the state, and many are smaller districts, they're great opportunities for some of our hourly staff who want to advance in their career, move on to potentially getting an associate's degree or further their education to grow into a larger school district. Sometimes you just need a beginning. You need a start. Our food allergy management plan is too extensive for me to talk about, and I'm not a registered dietitian, but we've got a bunch of them. There are eight registered dietitians on staff in Machio's, and that's more than I've known in any other company in the state that has. Our dietitians work independently with every parent who has a child with a serious food allergy. They will design a menu for that child with that parent. They'll, they exchange records, and there's signatures that are exchanged, and consent forms that the parent will sign once the registered dietitian develops a menu for the child. That's also shared with the school nurse and, and the school principal. If there's training that needs to be conducted, cross-contamination training, the, depending on the severity of the allergy, the dietitian will personally go to the school where that child is enrolled and train the staff on how to prepare the meal, so that if, if this cross-contamination issue, so that there's no possibility that this child could be, could receive a contamination from something else. That is how extensive it is. Everything from carbohydrate information to calorie counts on all food labels are available on our Machio's website for the menus each day. And if that isn't enough, if a parent still would like to speak to a person, there's no, there's no auto-dial system in Machio's. When you call Machio's, you get a, you get a receptionist, and a receptionist transfers you to a human being who will explain everything and answer all questions to the parents. Now, I didn't want to begin with this, as a lot of people do. I wanted to end with this, because I don't think this should have been the top factor for selecting Machio's. But when it comes down to the fiscal soundness of the program, Machio's did have the lowest projected total operating cost. Our costs we proposed came in at 3, 3.289 million. We also had the lowest management fee. Our management fee was nearly half the management fee of the other company which proposed. Our management fee is, for the year, is $140,000. That would increase by whatever the CPI is each year, if that is in fact what the board agrees to. If we don't do a good job, I don't expect you're going to be excited to give us a raise, and that is what we work towards. But just to give you an idea of what the difference was in our fees from the prior company, nearly $500,000 over the course of five years. Now, I don't want to explain why, but I'll tell you this. Our fee is not undercut. It isn't anything that's unreasonable. We didn't try and buy your business. We're a small business. We're a small company. We're family-owned. It's this guy, his partner, and a couple of other people in Chester, New Jersey. We don't have the overhead requirements that some of our competitors have, and we also, this is our first year proposing and our first year in, in West Orange. Previous company had been here for quite some time. You know, there's the term in the industry, there's the incumbent's advantage and the incumbent's disadvantage. One of the disadvantages of an incumbent who's been in the district for a very, very long period of time is the escalation of their fees. We have the advantage of proposing for the first time with our base rate fees, which is what we did. And I believe that the service we provide is, is going to exceed the service you were ever receiving in the past. Beyond that, our guarantee, we guaranteed the district a profit of $321,826. That was also higher than the other company which proposed. And how we do that is, well, through an emphasis on breakfast participation. We want to increase the amount of students that are eating breakfast. You've taken some measures to breakfast after the bell. So you've, you've shown that there's a commitment that you want your students to eat breakfast more. We all know the benefits academically of that. We know the benefits for behavior, and we know the overall benefits for students eating breakfast. So we certainly want to be a part of that, and our proposal included an emphasis on breakfast participation. We also want to focus on, you know, of course, healthy lunches and a more culturally diverse menu options. We're getting much more diverse each day, and as I always look at school districts, I always, it's a very easy, you know, litmus test, just kind of look, scan the room and see, see, see what kind of people are out there, and talk to some folks. And then let's, let's create some menus that are representative of the cultures of the community that we serve. It isn't that difficult. We've done some great projects with districts where we've had input from students. We've had student recipe contests, and we've gotten some great respondents from that. And as a result, we continue to expand the, the level of diversity in our menus. Startup and transition plan. We know this was a late award, so we have kicked things up a notch. Communication is key at this point. So I've been in constant communication with Mr. Calvano, and we're, we're, we've had teams on site, getting the employees signed up, getting their paperwork completed. We wanted to make sure, before there were rumors out there that people weren't going to have jobs, we wanted to get ahead of that. The first thing that I always do is contact the employees, because they're the ones who are, are most, most impacted. And those are the ones who have the most anxiety about some of these changes. So we did that, and very successfully, I might add. Once we spoke to the employees and let them know that they were all going to be retained, and, you know, there was going to be no difference in what their salaries were, actually, it was going to be more, again, everybody seemed to be much more comfortable with how things were proceeding. Once the stu, the administration, school administration begins to come back, next step would be to have principal meetings. Meeting with all the principals, to understand what's going on. We certainly want to give them an orientation on things, and I don't want to assume that everybody's aware of everything. Some people have been off for the summer. So we want to make sure that we understand what, 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 what the, where the landmines are. You know, every, every building has its own nuances, so we want to make sure that we don't miss any steps. If it's, you know, I had an experience where I had employees wearing baseball hats. I didn't know the school had a no-baseball hat policy. So those are some of the little things that we have to understand. Everything in our company is, is, can be adjusted. We can customize things. We're, the great part about the organization is that we have the ability to change, and we don't need to go through a lot of different layers. And so if it's a matter of, well, we have baseball hats as part of our uniform, we can't do that in this school, easy answer, I just ask that guy, and he says, okay, don't wear baseball hats. Wear a hairnet instead. The who, what, where, when- Who, what, where, when, and, and how. So that's important, too, just, just getting everybody up to speed and answering all the basic questions that are out there. This isn't nearly going to be as tragic or traumatic as some, some might think, but it is going to be a change, and we recognize that. So there's, there's no worries, I don't have any problem answering questions, as many as they may have, if it makes people more comfortable with what we're doing. I heard today, communication is very important to you, so I am here at your service. That's all that I have in my presentation, so if you'd love to have any questions. You're welcome. Yeah, I know, I remember you, too.
All right, you want to start?
Yes, thank you for your presentation, and welcome to West Orange.
Thank you so much.
I was very interested in the parent-student advisory groups. That was an original question of mine a while back, and for some reason you didn't touch on that one in the PowerPoint.
Oh, sorry about that. We, it was on my slides.
It was, yes.
And I just skipped over. We have advisory committees in every school. They're made up of parents, students, faculty, and a faculty member must be present. That's actually a state requirement. I don't know if that was being done consistently in the past, but that is something that will be done with us. Every school will have at least two of those meetings a year.
Okay, twice a year.
Twice a year.
That was my other question, how often?
It is, yeah, and it's a procurement requirement, you'll have access to the minutes of those meetings as well.
Okay, and then menus, faculty and student menus, that was also a bullet.
Yes. Well, I didn't provide any samples of the menus, they were in the, in the proposal, but we are, we do have a stu, a faculty menu, as well as a student menu. Faculty menu is different, pricing structure is different, but that also includes specials, weekly specials. We've been working a lot with the point-of-sale company that you use, that's the, sure, answer is a cash register system, that we can get orders online. So faculty can actually order through an app on our Nutrislice program, and they can preorder an item that we can have ready for them when they come down, even prepaid with it, which would be a nice convenient thing for them.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you for coming in. I know I had quite a lot of reservations, but having heard your presentation and gotten some answers from, from John a week ago, I feel much better. But I still have a couple.
Okay.
I'm glad to see that you have a sustainability plan, and I just wanted to know what that looks like when it comes to trays. I know our Fight for Green Club here at the high school has been asking us for years to try to do something about that. What, what do you do? Do you have plastic trays, paper trays, corrugated, corrugated board?
Well, we have access to all of those. Now, the pro, what we saw in the district, there were some schools that had the reusable plastic trays, and if, if that is the, what's in use, we're going to continue to do that. If other schools that aren't using the hard plastic trays, we'd certainly be able to do an evaluation and recommend whether or not it's worth going to a polystyrene substitute, like a corrugated, or, that's really the only other option, corrugated cardboard tray. Or perhaps it is better to reinvest in repairing an old dishwasher, or potentially buying a new dishwasher, and then going to plastic hard, reusable trays.
Okay. I see your onsite staffing plan, and it made me think of our 18 to 21 program. I know in the past, our, our other food service vendor had hired some of our 18 to 21 kids. Do you have a similar program?
We sure do. As a matter of fact, I've spoken to a parent a couple of weeks ago whose son was participating in that program, and she asked if we would be continuing it, and I reassured her, yes, we would. We've worked with other agencies in the past, whether it was Easter Seals, or ARC, ARC Agency, those are externals, but if you have your own internal, we welcome that. Other districts in Phillipsburg, we're working with their, their programs and their students, trying to teach them life skills. They're actually getting, they're in paid positions during the day, they're, they're operating a breakfast cart in one, we started in one school, which is, is fun. But, you know, we certainly want to participate any way we can in working with these, these children and helping them teach life skills, so they'll be ready in the future.
Okay. To piggyback on Ms. Triggs' comment about the parent advisory, the district also has a health and wellness committee. Would you continue to participate in that? I believe SEDEXO was a part of that when it was, when it was meeting more frequently.
Yes.
Now, it's mostly central to the ministry.
We would, and I'll, I'll up the ante and volunteer a dietitian to attend as well, because we've got so many.
Okay. And my last question is, at, at the end of the week, when, when you have food that's leftover, that obviously you cannot use on Monday, do you participate in a backpack program to send home food with students who are, whose families are in need?
I don't, I don't know if we have a, a school district doing a backpack program right now, but I, we are, we do have several schools that are working with food banks for leftovers on the weekends, Phillipsburg being one of them. But we're not opposed to doing a backpack program if that's what you want. We could do that in conjunction with food banks, we could do that through fundraising for donations, or, because leftover isn't going to, you know, be enough to sustain a full backpack program. I've operated them in the past. It's usually, we'd need to have a partnership with, with some other agencies in order to do that.
Local branch or something.
Certainly willing to do that if there's a need and there's a desire.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Mr. Robertson?
Thank you. Thanks for the extensive presentation. I, too, am guilty of having had reservations first, but I do appreciate your presentation, and I understand how a family-owned business can certainly bring a different type of relationship, too, in a very positive way. First, well, good to hear that you're going to work with the 1821 program. We also have a business and CTE, Career and Technical Education Department, that's very extensive, and that includes a, a cooking and chef component, and some other components for business that, you know, whether it's accounting, et cetera. Do you ever do internships?
I don't know if we've ever had a formal internship program, but we have worked with students that have culinary programs. We work with several tech vocational technical schools that have culinary programs, we, Essex County, Essex County, Warren County, both have tech schools, which we have students work on the line as part of their class curriculum. They're not, I guess it's part of their curriculum, so they're not paid, but we're certainly willing to do that, and if there's any opportunities for your students graduating before, if that want to go into culinary arts, you know, we could certainly work with them to place them in, in a capacity where they're, you know, in a management or supervisory position, working alongside our chef, just to get some industry experience.
That would be wonderful, yeah. Nancy Mullen heads our department, I'm sure. You can sit down with the good Dr. Kescone and Nancy, and, but that would be a great opportunity, not only for the culinary arts portion, but you're running a business, there are accounting and finance components, where, you know, it'd be great for our students to be able to learn the business. Do you provide any sort of grants programs?
Like scholarships?
Scholarships or grants. Actually, your SEDEXO had a component where you could apply for grants for certain things, and certainly if you contribute to our scholarship program, we'd be more than happy for that.
What I'd like to do, though, because we're prohibited from doing that in the, because it wasn't in the RFP, the state doesn't allow us to do that anymore, or any other company. However, what we've done is, through some of the events, community events, that we would be holding, whether it's culinary competitions, student, student cooking demonstrations, or some of our chef demonstrations, charging a small gate fee for participants, people from the public to want to, you know, come in, that money could be returned to you for the purpose of, of scholarships, so it's.
Sure, that sounds good. Good to hear about your extensive food allergy management plan. We have a super mom out there who wrote the most extensive.
Yeah, I saw somebody cheering back there.
Allergy management guide, I think I've ever seen. I'm sure will have some good input for you. So looking at breakfast, do you already do breakfast before-the-bell programs anywhere?
Oh, sure.
Okay, good.
That's very prolific in the state.
Yeah, we had piloted that, and we're supposed to look at, one of the many things that you'll, you'll find out about if you haven't already, but we've piloted that, and we're looking to expand that at some point, so. Talk about culturally diverse lunch options. We have one of the most diverse districts in the country. In fact, one of our elementary schools is in the top 100 most diverse elementary schools in the country, from economics, race, race and ethnicity, religion, et cetera. How do you go about, you talked about kind of looking at who's out there, how do you actually go about developing these diverse menu options?
Well, we have, we already have a pretty wide range of recipes that we offer to the schools. The trick is identifying where, where the flavor profile is in every school district, so we could work with you, your, your building principals, and looking, look at demographic information, or again, it's non-scientific, but it's just kind of eyeballing where, you know, what, what kind of students we have. And that's, you know, I think some of the focus groups, some of the student advisory councils, is going to give us some good insight towards that. One of the things we do in those meetings is we ask about what kind of items do you like, what, would you like to see, what, what don't you see enough of, and what would you like to see less of?
Okay. I didn't bring copy of the RFP with me, but you're aware that we do quite a few special events, from Black History Month dinners to Hispanic Heritage Month, et cetera. That's all part of?
Yes.
Okay.
And that will continue.
All right, good. That's it, thank you very much, and welcome.
Thank you.
Ms. Burke.
So in the interest of time, I'm just going to say thank you for coming out and presenting tonight. I think there's a lot of good information here, a lot of good things to come. I'm more the fitness person, so I really enjoy hearing about the healthy options and the farm-to-tray option, working with the local farms, so that's great to hear, and thank you, welcome.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thanks. One question I've heard from a few friends who work with things like football boosters, music boosters, and also some staff members who tend to coordinate special events, is that they're usually able, under the current system, to give Josh a call, and they'll, you know, say, you know, we only have a little bit of money to work with, can you work with us? Do you, will, under Macchio's, will Josh still have that same sort of flexibility to sort of, you know, help booster clubs and?
Our director, our director will absolutely work with, with your organizations. We understand they're working through nonprofits, and they're just trying to raise money to support the team.
Exactly.
We get that. So, yes, the answer is yes.
Good to confirm, kind of thought so. Okay, we've got another agenda comment section, so folks will come up, and if they have any questions on anything that's on the agenda, including this presentation, they can ask it, if you guys want to have a seat and stick around, and then you can just kind of answer anything that arises on your domain after that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great question.
Three different people.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hi, Robin Berkowitz, 69 Windding Way, and I also teach at St. Cloud. Just had quite a few questions regarding our new food service. First of all, you know, right now we have many menu choices. I know we've talked about diverse menu choices, but we have two hots, a sandwich, usually a bagel boat, not peanut butter, peanut butter and jelly, but there's usually like six or seven choices. Also, we use Mail Pay Plus right now, the online service, the children have their logins. It's a big process in kindergarten, getting them used to their numbers, are we going to keep that, or are we switching that over? Because as a teacher, that's going to be a huge process. Also, what other districts around us currently are using, I'm sorry, I don't remember the name, Macchio's, I wouldn't mind knowing that. Also, when you talk about faculty menus, even in the smaller schools like St. Cloud, I am a teacher who by Wednesday has no lunch that I'm bringing for me, so I pretty much buy my lunch. So are there teacher lunches, or is it the same menu? Will we be getting something? Just wondering a little bit more about how that's going to work. Also, how did we, when we go to switch, we, do we just put in for a bid, is there a taste testing? Have you been to any of the schools where the food is served? Have you tasted the food, seen the food, anything like that? Or do we just kind of go lowest bid? Just trying to get an idea of how it's going to work, and as a parent of a high school, kind of a high school student, I need to know what she's going to be eating, and as a teacher, I just want to know how it's going to work as far as we're concerned. Thank you.
Hi, Nicole Ruffo for Overlook Avenue. I'm a mom of three food allergy kids, so your food allergy slide got me interested. It, with 6,000 students, we're talking about possibly 500 allergy kids, it's about 1 in 12. So managing that is a big deal, and we haven't had really a proper management of it in our school district regarding the food services. So for me, as an allergy mom, if my child wanted to have something from the menu, I needed to call ahead and really ask about it, and it was, it's frustrating, and it makes the children feel like they're left out. And like you said, you really like to be inclusive, which is so important for many reasons. One thing that I was very excited when you said the Nutrislice thing, because the app in Westfield where I used to teach, they use the Nutrislice app, and I hope you use it to its full potential, where everything is listed on it with every allergen ingredient, because just seeing a menu, enchiladas, well, what's in the enchiladas, right? Exactly every single ingredient, so that's very exciting, and I hope it's used to its full extent. There's also free apps and management plans that can be used, it's called Allergy Force, that school districts can actually use, where the allergens of the children are then connected with the food, so when you're doing big events where there's food, where maybe the child not, is not as much aware to speak up for themselves or whatnot, that you just are aware of, okay, in this school we have 25 peanut allergies and four milk allergies in an app in an accessible way. What other questions do I have? Just, I guess, making sure that you're utilizing the app allergens for every meal, that it's updated, how far in advance do you see the menus? Just because, you know, when kids look to see what they want to have, you know, how much time are we looking at, like a month, weeks? And again, I'm really excited about the idea of the parent, student, teacher, student kind of group at the school, because again, that's been something that's been kind of left off. So also, I called somebody at SEDEXO to make a back-to-school breakfast this morning, because I'm the PTA treasurer at Edison, so why, do I need to call them now? Same person?
It's probably, you're probably still calling Josh, it's the same person.
It was, yeah, I had a different phone number of who I was calling, but just good to know, I have to arrange that, so, thank you.
Hi, Jennifer Tunncliff, 8 Hartshorn Terrace. I just also wanted to piggyback on the teacher from St. Cloud, about how we're handling the transition of account payments, so I want to make sure that that's clear, and that parents get notified in, well in advance, since I think a lot of parents are not aware that we've changed our vendor for food service, so that may come as a surprise, and I think we have to be really clear on how that's done. And then also, I'm excited to hear that you want to increase the breakfast before the bell and breakfast participation, and I'm glad to hear that you're going to meet with the school principals, because I do understand from some of the principals that that program can be disruptive in the classroom, so I just want to make sure that you're talking to them and making sure that you're coming up with a plan that may not be as disruptive to the education, while also ensuring that our children are getting adequate nutrition for their day. Thank you so much, thank you.
Thank you.
Ron Charles, Colonial Woods Drive. Two things on the food vendor. Can we talk a little bit about the term of the contract, if it was one year with a few years' options? And will we still be using the same meal, I guess the meal pay plan, the same vendor that the, the kids or the parents use now? And I have a question on item on page 11, for the Pro Care Associates LLC, I believe it's Dr. Kelly's office. If it is, I just want to publicly say, you know, and support the doctor, he does outstanding diuretics. He does outstanding job, his staff fantastic. He's considered an expert on high school athletics. He was, him and his brother were star wrestlers at Wessex High School. When I was in school, we went up against them many years. So I just wanted to give my public endorsement to Dr. Kelly and his staff, that's it.
Thank you.
James Rawls, 46 Warren Road. Wasn't expecting that to be so many great items today on the agenda. Couldn't tell by the listed items and I didn't even know about the bubble. So actually came here to personally thank the school board members and superintendent for attending our first annual fish fry event that we had that kicked off fundraising activities for the football team. And one of the school board members mentioned that it would be great to have a list of our events. So I did print out a list of all of our events that I was going to personally hand out to you. One of the goals for our organization this year is to start up some activities that really involve the community as a whole and leave a legal legacy for others to follow. And with the help of Ron Charles and also Supal Mucci, we will be having our first carnival and that kicks off on Wednesday. So we hope that we see members of the community and you all there, you're certainly invited to attend. So that was a personal invite and I'll provide you with these lists of events. And just I want to commend you guys on all the tireless work that you do because, you know, as you can see by an agenda like tonight, a lot of tough issues that you have to deal with. Appreciate your dedication, thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone further on agenda comment? All right, seeing none, if you guys want to come answer, yeah.
Okay. First question I got was around the, the menu and the number of choices, the selection. Answer your question is the selection and the number will be the same or more. That was actually one of the specifications in the RFP was the current menus that you have. So we proposed in most cases the same, but in a few cases more, the option. So you'll still have that. The bagel bags, you'll still have the bagel boats, I know those are always popular. Point-of-sale system where the payment, online payment John's going to talk about, but there's really no change to that. Other districts we're in, in this county, we're in Bloomfield, we're in Essex County. High schools, Essex County Vultec, all the schools in Essex County. Where?
Bearfield.
Bearfield, we're in Garfield, Hackensack. I mean, I'm going a little bit further out, but we certainly have a large presence in the state with nearly 200, 200 districts that we serve.
Can you mention a large districts?
We're in Bridgewater, Raritan, we're in, we're in North Plainfield and Plainfield. We're in Hillside, Roselle, we're in Bridgewater, I said Bridgewater, we're in Phillipsburg. Too many in Warren County to mention. Sparta in Sussex, a little further down south, we're in.
Teaneck, Hackensack, Garfield.
Garfield, yeah, I mean, there's a lot, but some of the larger ones.
And I also see Caldwell and West Caldwell on the list.
Caldwell and West Caldwell, both of those.
Roseland's, yeah, it's smaller.
That's a little one though. John's going to talk about the RFP, our selection process, but I did, it wasn't a low bid at all. It was actually an RFP, which is request for proposal. Because there are so many variables, you know, it's not one of those things you want to pick the low bid. But there's criteria that we followed, selection criteria, which companies that proposed were both evaluated on and the scoring criteria John can speak to. Nutrislice, yes, we do fully utilize Nutrislice. We actually had a meeting with the Nutrislice representatives this past couple of weeks just to find out how, how much we really weren't utilizing it because there's, it's so much.
Well, I've been running workshops with them right now.
Yeah, we're running workshops because.
And they're actually coming out from Colorado to our office.
We were, we were surprised to learn how, how many more things that it does that we weren't even aware of. So we fully intend to utilize it, all the ingredients putting on. We're actually taking photos now of all of our menus, which is, is neat. So when you click on that item, you're not going to see a stock photo. You'll actually see a photo of the way the food's going to look when it's served to your kids. Student alerts, I think you talked about student alerts. That's something that we work into the point-of-sale system. So when a kid, a student comes through the line, as soon as they put their ID number in, it flags them as, as, as an alert. So the cashier would be aware to make sure that the items that they're, they're buying to consume comply with what their, their allergy is. I think that was the question you asked. As far as advanced notice for menus, menus are usually posted two weeks in advance of the month. So generally any given month, there'll be two menus that'll be visible, the current menu within, you know, and then the following month's menu, two weeks ahead of time. Online payments, John says he's going to speak to that, but we'll continue to offer online payments. Students can still do that and if there's a balance on your account, it transfers over. As far as ID numbers go, I believe the system that you're using right now just rolls over and the students keep their ID as long as they're in that building. I think when they move to a different building, they get a new ID. But as long as they're in the same building, they, they don't. I could be wrong, I have to get more familiar with your system specifically. That's generally how it works. And the, and then that's it, other than the rest was the contract, the online.
So for Meal Plus, that is our system. The district system is not the food service management company system. So regardless on who we choose and who we change to in the future, it'll still be the same system. So any balances that are in the, in the system currently will roll over and will continue. You'll exactly see your balance, so there'll be no changes there. Regarding the RFP, the state requires us to go out for an RFP every five years. And this is the year that is number five for us. Because what we would do is for, in the past, we would go out to bid and then we'd do four one-year renewals. Now we're up to the fifth year. So now the fifth year, we have to, after the fifth year, we have to go out to bid. The state actually revised their specifications. They actually included a rubric in there on how you score certain areas of the RFP. So three individuals, including myself, the acting superintendent at that time, and the assistant business minister evaluated those three, the two RFPs that we received. And each one of us individually ranked Machio as the higher company utilizing the state's rubric. We have to then send the actual scoring down to the state. They have to, they review the entire packet and then they'll give us the final approval. I could tell you there was another district who, same situation with us, had the previous food service company. And after the rank-in, rank-in was Machio. They decided that, why don't we just keep it with Sidexo? So they maintained their account with Sidexo, they submitted the paperwork to the state. The state turned around and said, you can't do that. You need to, now we send that approval and award it to Machio. So it's not our choice, we actually have to go through a scoring process. And I think, oh, the contract, the contract is for one year again. So we have the option now for the next four years to do a renewal for the next four years. And I know it's not going to happen, but if we decide after next year, something's not working out perfectly for us, we have the right to then go out for another bid or another RFP.
Do the student ID numbers change when they switch buildings?
I don't know. I don't know that answer.
Because I don't think that's happened in the past.
Okay, so whatever it was, it was just going to maintain, they're going to maintain the same.
I think my kids have the same student ID number since kindergarten, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, they stay the same.
But it's the district system, not the vendors.
Right, so it's our system, so we can constantly say they've changed.
I apologize. So many different systems out there, they all work differently.
It works the way we need it to, so no worries. All right, I think that covers that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it, have a good night.
All right. Onwards. May I have a motion for personnel items one through five?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
All right, any discussion?
Uh, yes.
You said yes first, I think, Mr. Robertson, you can start.
Sure. First want to congratulate Bernadette Romano and Susan Fink for retiring Bernadette after 19 years, Susan after 17.5. And I just want to say hearty congratulations to Anna Marti, one of our favorite, one of my favorite people, one of our favorite people, who's taken over as the Hazel principal. There's just nobody more competent and just incredible. Done everything from head of world language in ESL to been assistant principal in multiple buildings. And it's just, everybody loves you. So thank you and we're very lucky that you're, that you're taking this position.
Hi, I'd like to add my congrats as well to Ms. Marti. I've known her for so long since she was ESL supervisor here in the high school. And she's been interim at several schools, interim principal at several schools, Gregory Hazel, and assistant, and interim at Redwood as well, and then assistant principal at Redwood. So she thoroughly knows the role and has been here for so long and we all love her. And so I'm very happy to say congratulations. I do have one other thing. Mr. Calabano, I just want to repeat my request for the breakage figures now that I see two more retirements on here. So if you could just give us a total now, maybe at another meeting, but if you have it, great. But if not, it would help us.
You mean during budget process? I don't have the grand total. Because every time when we had the breakage, we would remove the individual that's retiring and then replace them with a new salary. We didn't keep track of that.
Okay, we have two more retirements now, there's no way to, okay, well, another time if you could give us a total. Okay, thank you.
And I'll echo what they said. All right. All right, Mr. Calabano, let's vote. Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Triggs Scales?
Yes.
Vice President Mordecai?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. All right, up next, curriculum and instruction, numbers one through six. May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. Ladies first.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. Part of what we're recommending approval of is the restorative justice study dissertation Caldwell University by Dana Perk and teacher world languages at West Orange High. I don't know if you wanted to say anything about that since that's one of our, one of our initiatives and this is a great opportunity with somebody who's already in the house.
Yeah, so. Yeah, exactly. So this was, so this was a reapproval.
Right, it's a reapproval.
But I had, I had the, you know, the, you know, the benefit and privilege to, you know, to work Ms. Perk and she made a couple of adjustments. I think the study that she's actually going to implement is a bit more robust in terms of the number of folks with whom she's working. So, you know, having spoken with, with Ms. Mordecai, I've already let Ms. Perk know that we look forward to perhaps getting a presentation at some point in time on her findings and how it might contribute to our own practices here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Calabano.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Triggs Scales?
Yes.
Vice President Mordecai?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. Okay, up next, special services, items one through six. And for business office, items one through four, we're going to pull out number five so that we can get a little separate discussion on that. And numbers six through 12, as amended. So one through four and six through 12 amended.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All right, any discussion on the one through four slash six through 12?
I just want to make sure that when we're voting, we did take out and table for tonight item, the third item in number 10.
Yep, that was the as amended, yep. All right, Mr. Calabano.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Triggs Scales?
Yes.
Vice President Mordecai?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. Okay, and now business office item number five, may I have a motion for that?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
And discussion, Mr. Calabano, if you could explain the breakout of that.
Okay, so on July 22nd, the board approved the proposal for the architect for three things. One is the schematic design and the New Jersey DOE submission of 136-6. The long-range facility plan update, including the project-related expenses of $8,300 and pre-referendum services for $5,000. Just basically it's going to be probably printing and reproduction costs. So that totals the 159-900. Now, we approved the proposal, I now need to fund that proposal. I could have had the resolution on a July 22nd meeting, but I was waiting for the extraordinary aid, the numbers to come in from the state. We actually fill out applications in June and then sometime at the end of July, we get what our allocation is. I had a good feeling that we would have additional funds received than what we anticipated. So while we built the budget, we actually anticipated a certain dollar amount. We never know what that dollar amount is because it all depends on what the pot can hold. Governor Murphy did increase the amount of aid for extraordinary aid. So rather than me taking it from surplus and then, you know, and then having this extra funding that we received go back into surplus, I waited for the extraordinary aid. So the motion is to appropriate the 159-9, fund the additional extraordinary aid that we received to go into this account, which will cover for those three expenses.
Gotcha. Can you go further? All right. Mr. Calabano, let's vote.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Triggs Scales?
Yes.
Vice President Mordecai?
Yes, only to $18,300 for the update of the long-range facilities plan and no to the rest.
President Alper?
Yes. All right, may I have a motion for reports, items one through four?
I'll motion.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Mr. Calabano.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Triggs Scales?
Yes.
Vice President Mordecai?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. Okay, up next, petitions and hearings of citizens. You can come up and comment on any item at all. You'll have three minutes, let us know your name and address and Mr. Calabano will work the clock.
Hi again, Robyn Iserlis, 22 Yale Terrace. I wanted to thank the board for approving Dr. Perk's program. My daughter was one of the fortunate students to be a part of it last year. And this summer she's a counselor and she's using her restorative justice training to resolve conflict. So thank you for that. And I hope that it could be something to perhaps inform our HIB, SSDS issues, of course, in accordance to the state mandates. But hopefully we can try to make those two meld. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Nicole Ruffo for Overlook Avenue. This is my first meeting with our new superintendent, so I just wanted to officially welcome you and also thank the board because I saw from the Google Calendar how many meetings you guys have had this spring, leading up to the hiring. And so I know what an important decision it was and you guys took it very seriously. And I think that's why last year in the election felt so important for new board members because we knew this was going to come up. So welcoming our new superintendent and also thanking our acting superintendent who, you know, held the court for a while. So I am a mom of allergy kids, three of them I mentioned. And I had come here in February asking for there to be a committee formed, an allergy awareness committee, just so that we could actually really look at how our district is doing. And I can tell you that we're not doing that great, just in the fact that we don't even have an allergy management plan, which many districts have. And that's very important for parents to be reassured of just what is to be expected. And as we're approaching a brand-new school year, I can tell you that the anxiety is very high for allergy families. There was just a brand-new addition of this magazine called Allergic Living and the entire thing was due to mental health in allergy life. And it's very stressful for parents to send their kids to school no matter what, especially with what's going on in the world. But on top of that, to send them to school and to be wondering, am I going to get a call in the middle of the day that there's an emergency? And I'll tell you that having met many allergy families and just kind of this work that I've been doing, there are inconsistencies that are at our schools. And so people just want a little bit more. And I'm really looking forward to what comes of that. So I just, I would like to know what is the progress of the allergy committee and where we're at with that. I know that there was conversations of possibly resubmitting the application for people to join. join, because it wasn't really advertised very well, and I think a lot of allergy families missed out on hearing about it. I know it wasn't sent home, like via school email or a letter or anything, so no one really heard about it unless they were in a secret group, I guess, secret, secret meeting. But anyways, I'm really looking forward to what comes of this for my three kids, but mostly for the whole district, because again, there are so many families, just today at the pool, I met another teacher mom who has kids' food allergies in our district, so, you know, I come across them all the time, and it just seems like we should be welcoming them with information and, and help and support. So, I'm excited to hear about what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jennifer Tennycliff, 8 Hartshorn Terrace. I just had a comment and maybe a question, because I know you took off the third item on number 10 in the section of the finance, in the finance section, and I'm just trying to understand why, because I know I talked to three of you independently about this particular issue, and I just, you know, it seems frustrating that the decision to change the school was made three years ago, and now we're revisiting a very generous gift from a school principal, and I'm not sure what the concern is or the issue is, so I think the public deserves an answer on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone further? All right, seeing none, we'll close that section. Dr. Cascone, if you'd like to start.
Yes, first, I just want to congratulate Ms. Marti. Felicidades. You're on my first administrative hire as a superintendent, first recommendation for administrative hire. I know you will serve that school community in an outstanding fashion, and I look forward to working with you and supporting you in that, as you take on that new role. Just relative to Ms. Ruffo, so I know we have been trying to schedule a meeting, I'm not sure where we are, do we have it yet on the count? We don't, okay. So maybe follow up with Ms. Hughes tomorrow. I know I look forward to meeting with you and, and learning from you, from a parent perspective, you know, from an advocacy perspective. I think that's one of the great opportunities with having parents who have specialized interests and knowledge, is that, you know, we can use that to help inform our own efforts, our own evaluative efforts, our own planning efforts in identifying, going back to our programs and evaluating where we're doing okay, where we're not, and then kind of goal-setting for the people who are responsible for doing those things to actually do them, and then, you know, if necessary, hold them accountable for doing them. But it starts with getting good specialized information like people, like, you know, from people like yourself. So I look forward to our meeting, I'm sorry we haven't been able to get it done yet, but please reach out to my office tomorrow, and I look forward to meeting with you and your group and seeing how we can move forward. And that is all.
Okay. I would echo both of those, and as for the donation, at the moment, we don't have broad agreement on this yet, and we're still really, you know, kicking it around. If folks, I don't want to speak for the board, because we don't have broad agreement on it, I'll hold off on my own thoughts. If folks want to get into it, we can get into it in board member report shortly. If you want to say anything on that front, you certainly can as well.
I think that, you know, one layer which has been raised recently, which I think is a consideration worthy of exploration, is the idea of, and it really, you know, kind of coincidentally is related to kind of facilities plans and how we're kind of taking care of facility needs on our own, and the idea of, and with much respect to the largesse of Dr. Polara is, should that have to happen? Should that be, should and could that be something that can be funded out of our own district lines and our own facilities plans? And so that was kind of one of the reasons. I think that there is, so there is ongoing conversation which is occurring around it, and I understand that that's frustrating at this time to Dr. Polara and her donation and other folks in the community who I know support it quite wholeheartedly. We want to make sure that when we bring a motion forward to the board, that we've had an opportunity to explore all angles to that, and getting to some degree of consensus on it. But that's all I really have to say on it at the moment. So we felt that, you know, the board felt that tabling the initiative enables us to kind of explore those other angles to it before moving it back forward for a vote.
All right. Let's roll into board member reports, we'll start with Ms. Triggs Scales.
Okay, so I just wanted to say what a great time we had at the Fish Fry. That was a fabulous afternoon, the food was great, the company was great, watching Pal and our kids interacting, and the staffs, the coaches interacting, was really a wonderful event, and so we look forward to many, many more. The other thing I'd like to do tonight is to take a few minutes and to highlight an op-ed by our Commissioner of Education, Lamont, Dr. Lamont Repalet. And the title of his op-ed from August 5th was "Addressing Inequities in New Jersey's Public Schools Is Moral Imperative." And it's a lengthy article, and you can find it on New Jersey Spotlight, and Wocas also posted that on their site. But I just wanted to go on record to talk about some of what he shared. So what does educational equity look like? In an education context, it means understanding that each child has different needs. Each child may require different supports to have equitable and fair access to education and career opportunities. We unfortunately also see inequity throughout our nation, in the form of unnecessary barriers to our students' learning. For instance, some families lack access to high-quality, free preschool education, while some older students and even adults do not have clear on-ramps to viable careers. Yet other students' academic success may be stunted by social, emotional issues, trauma, or they may find themselves to be victims of explicit or implicit biases or lowered At the New Jersey Department of Education, we are focused on providing equity in action. We have set a goal to ensure all students have equitable access to resources, quality educational programming, and post-secondary opportunities. We understand that achieving equity across the state is a moonshot. However, by changing and evolving our mindset, we are continuously asking ourselves, how are our supports to schools and districts empowering them to meet their individual students' needs? And how do we ensure our policies and practices create opportunities, not unfair barriers to student learning? For these reasons, I believe education equity is a continuous cycle of improvement, a motion, and action, and a mindset. So the State Department has already begun work, looking at career and technical education, or it's referred to as CTE, which allows interested high school students to receive hands-on work experience in areas like manufacturing and hospitality, and promoting a whole-child view of education by prioritizing approaches like social-emotional learning programs that give children the skills needed to manage emotions, set goals, and make responsible decisions. It's also about having courageous conversations. Other examples include schools implementing LGBTQ policies and offering instruction that adapts to individual and situational trauma that students may be experiencing. So schools in the Garden State are working to ensure that students of color are not disproportionately represented in special education programming, and conversely, that they have access to gifted and talented programs. Schools are having courageous conversations about race and bias, developing equity councils and teams, implementing culturally relevant curricula, exploring alternatives to traditional disciplinary practices, and implementing culturally responsive teaching. In New Jersey, we are modeling and promoting equitable practices by supporting our educators to make sure they have the instructional tools and systems our students need. Working with educators across the state, we are focused on continually improving standards-aligned teaching and assessing, strengthened through data literacy. We are taking actions to combat the inequities we see across the nation. And so I just wanted to go on record and share that from our commissioner, and that we here in West Orange are committed to equity.
Thank you. Ms. Mordecai?
Thank you, Mr. Triggs Scales, that was, that was great. I also shared that on my social media page, and I just wanted to add to that. In our list of policies that we discussed a few months ago was our equity policy, so I just want to renew the request that we take a look at our equity policy and pass that soon, in light of the commissioner's directive. One other thing, I just want to say thank you to Dr. Cascone and my colleagues on the board for our hard work on the referendum, and for, instead of following the aggressive timeline, just going through the evaluation process instead. I really appreciate that. Thank you for taking a pause on that and making sure we cross all the Ts, dot all the Is, and make sure that we do the due diligence, so that when November comes, if it's November, that the community will support us. Thank you.
Mr. Robertson?
Just want to echo, first of all, thank you, Mr. Triggs Scales, for sharing the article like that. And the board is actually going to be reviewing, in addition to, as Ms. Mordecai pointed out, finalizing our equity policy, and thanks to Mr. Triggs Scales, greater focus on regulation, what the regulations will look like as well. The board also will be reviewing the comprehensive equity plan over the next couple of weeks, with the goal of finalizing everything before it's submitted to the state on the 26th. And we look forward to reconvening with Ms. DeMendez as well, the Diversity and Inclusion Committee, which has now broken out into four subcommittees. Very, very exciting, that first meeting was just, it was thrilling, it was a great experience. So, I just feel very happy that we as a team are really moving ahead, and these are no longer just discussions, they're action steps. You know, we funded and look forward to hiring the diversity and training, diversity-inclusion, anti-bias training consultant to address issues of cultural competency, so we made that commitment, funding it, and looking forward to moving ahead with that, it's very exciting. I want to thank Mr. Rawls and Coach Grant and Pal, that was a, the Fish Fry was an amazing event, all the, the parents and, and, you know, the Pal board was out there, and the coaches were out there, and it was great to see just how the partnership is just really off to an amazing start, and gelled, and the enthusiasm, it was, and great food. But what was also great is listening to Coach Grant, the assistant coaches, talk about, hey, you want to, you want to play, right? You want to play college? Well, guess what? You have to get into good colleges. You got to get into college, so the first thing we're going to focus on is academics. You know, you got to play in the classroom and get that right before you play on the field. And I just loved hearing, and the kids were into it, they were so into it, the chants and the clapping, and they were, they were totally, totally immersed, and it was beautiful. Also want to say, another Pal experience, I got to witness live Coach Cheryl do her thing as the cheerleading coach, my daughter Joelle is having a ball. She's now asking, well dad, Coach Cheryl said that we could do the varsity and JV if our parents said okay, can I dad? Sure. I mean, your, your energy out there is great, and they love you, and you love them, and I just saw nothing but beauty out there, it was a really wonderful thing. And also got to meet a lot of parents who had, they're watching the kids on the football field while they watch, you know, the boys on the football field while they watch the girls over in cheerleading, and they're going back and forth between the two, and I was always a mountaintop parent, so this Pal experience is really cool, and it's a new one for me. Also wanted to mention, in regard to Kelly, I'm wearing my Kelly shirt today, in deference to my colleagues, I'm not going to go into any conversation on it, but just to say that there are a lot of legitimate feelings and considerations, and we're going to reconvene and look forward to that, but, you know, I'm the Kelly fan, there we go. What else here? Um, that's pretty much it. And thanks for West Orange, to West Orange Cares too, for sharing the article and pushing that out there, since that's going to be a major focus for us. That's it. I'm done.
Ms. Merklinger?
Sure. So I just want to thank you, Mark, for that nice mention. Thank you. I unfortunately was at a baseball tournament the night of the Fish Fry, so I apologize, I couldn't get there, but I did hear from my peer, PAL board members, as well as a lot of the coaches, that it was a great event, there was a great turnout. In fact, Coach Grant has been down to a few of our PAL football practices this past week. Unfortunately, because of the blackout period, the student, the student athletes couldn't join us, but we're looking forward to having them join us going forward. In fact, today was the first, the start of fall sports, a lot of the child's were today, or began today. I know a lot of our student athletes have been hard at work in the bubble and weight rooms and working out, but today was the official first start, so that was great. Just to follow up on what Mr. Rawls said before, the carnival is starting on Wednesday. It's Wednesday through Sunday, Wednesday night through Saturday, it's from 6:00 to 10:00 PM, and Sunday from 4:00 to 9:00. It is going to be out on the Cimforti Grass Field. I will just like to mention that we have youth soccer, football, baseball, and cheerleading all going on, so every inch of this campus is going to be covered with kids, so it's a, that's one of the great things about West Orange, but I just asked for everyone to pay attention to safety. There's going to be a lot of kids running around, so just be careful about driving. I know we've asked our PAL kids to stay on the illicit drive side and not to go over on the Cimforti side, just to help with some of the traffic. For those of you that may have seen it, the West Orange Hall of Fame nominations, it's the first class, 2019, that is out on our Board of Ed website, and feel free to nominate someone that you feel is a student athlete or deserves to be in the Hall of Fame for West Orange High. Those are due by August 30th. Another thing on our West Orange Board of Ed website is the West Orange High School Alumni Network, so if you've graduated, we want to hear what you're up to, what's going on. Gregory is having their back-to-school luau on August 28th. Roosevelt is having a bagels and lox event on the 27th. Liberty is doing their student tours as well on the 27th. And this week, the band is coming back from camp, and they are going to have a performance at 5:00 o'clock, so we welcome everyone to come out and see what an amazing job the band does. Friday, Friday, yes. So again, so this, this facility will be, the West Orange High School campus is going to be crazy busy, it's going to be fun, the more people, the merrier, so encourage everyone to come out and see what's going on across the board.
All right. Thank you. Yeah, Fish Fry was fantastic, I'll see everyone at the carnival, and hopefully Friday when the band comes back as well. I'll see you all here again on the 26th at 8:00 PM for our next meeting, and that's it. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right.[1787.21]